This is the Carson City Planning Commission Workshop on December 7th. Call or roll, please.
Sure, person Borders.
Present.
Commissioner Eswein.
Each here.
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Tingle. Sorry, mouth move. Commissioner Wiggins. Acorum is present.
Thank you. The public is invited at this time to comment on or discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time?
I see no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's one item on the agenda, so we don't necessarily have to modify it. For possible action, D1, discussion and possible action regarding the possible and possible and regarding possible amendments to the Carson City Municipal Code Title 18, Appendix Development Standards, Division 2 Parking and Division 3 Landscape. Mr. Plummel.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I'm just gonna, as you mentioned, we're gonna be discussing two chapters of the development standards this afternoon regarding parking and landscaping. First of all, just to give a general background, as I do at the start of each of these, for public information, we are, you know, we're not able to have the public at these workshops, but we do want public comment. All the documents, all the draft documents with proposed changes are being posted at carson.org forward slash Title 18 up there on the screen. And for each of these chapters, we're going through a multiple meeting process where we take it for comments to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors before doing that again with final recommendations to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. So today regarding parking and landscaping standards, we're just at the first step of the process, so there's still plenty of time to make comments and get public comments to the Planning Commission and Board. Today, we have some late material that was emailed to you and from Paul Eswein earlier, and you have hard, for those of you here, you have a hard copy of that. And so let me just, let's jump into it, into the discussion today, starting with parking. You do have the, you have the chapters in front of you, you have summary pages at the start of each one of the chapters that, you know, shows where the substantive changes are. Of course, we're continuing to make the technical corrections throughout to help the DA's office in the final writing of it, but we're just kind of pointing out the substantive changes here. So I think, you know, what I'll just do, we'll start with parking, I'll go through kind of some of the substantive changes or the ones we're proposing, and then we can have a broader discussion on parking requirements. And maybe starting just with a little bit is a discussion on parking requirements as kind of is indicated by the late material, you know, having requirements for parking is necessary, but it's also, it's very much a balance between regulation and having requirements and not trying not to require too much parking that takes away from other potential use of property, but while protecting, you know, the surrounding properties by making sure that individual uses are designed so that it doesn't negatively impact surrounding properties because of parking. Thinking, you know, an example is our current downtown parking requirements are different from the rest of the town because the downtown is a more walkable community, there's walkable area, there's more shared parking. We already have a lot of buildings downtown, the older parts that don't have, that where the whole block is building and there's no parking, and we have provisions so that those uses within those buildings can change over time without having to provide additional parking, and it's a pretty walkable downtown. And as the parking study showed that we just did, you know, there's even during the highest parking times, there's parking spaces available within a couple of our small downtown blocks. So that's kind of an overview of why you have parking requirements. This chapter deals with the design of parking lots and the parking requirements for individual uses. So just not many changes in this chapter or landscaping. We have a few changes based on our experience of using the code pretty much since it was adopted in 2002, but relatively minor changes. The first one is in Section 2.4, under the number of spaces required and joint parking. And this really isn't, this really isn't a change in practice, but it, right now, there are provisions for joint parking between adjoining property owners when the uses have generate peak demands at different times, and that might be like an office building during the day and restaurant in the evening, something like that. But it really didn't expressly say that same thing when those two uses are on the same property, so we're just adding verbiage in there so that when there are use, you know, we can consider parking requirements when uses on the same property may generate high peak demands at different times. Any question? How would you, I keep, I'm just talking for a while, Mr. Chair, would you like to just go through these changes and then bring it to you for discussion?
Yeah, let's go through the changes that you're proposing, and then let's let the commissioners talk about any item that they have that they want to ask about.
Okay. Just real quick then, hit the two more substantive changes that we're proposing in 2.5, under General Requirements, Subparagraph 1, there's just a little bit of clarification there. Again, it says screening of parking lots facing a residential zoning district is required. That's currently in the code. Just a little bit of clarification in there that that can include berms. It could include plantings, berm, solid fencing, or a combination thereof to sufficiently, to a sufficient height to screen automobile headlights, which is the intent of the screening. And I think that some of that verbiage is used, and that was used later in the downtown parking, but that's not in the general parking requirements, so we've put that in there. And then finally, in, again, 2.5, but Subparagraph 3, deals with off-site parking that's allowed by special use permit, so it doesn't happen that often, but we've had a couple of them where on site, where it's actually a remote parking lot that provides the parking for use on a different parking lot. It's required to have a special use permit in order to do that. There's a reference in there that it has to be within 300 feet. There's also a reference in there that it can be more than 300 feet with the special use permit, so part of that is just a little bit of cleanup of that section and removing the reference to 300 feet, believing that the distance should be based on the project size and other considerations that are considered with the special use permit anyway. So those are the substantive changes. As you noted, we discussed, Mr. Chair, there's a lot of clarifications and technical corrections in there, but these are kind of the substantive changes, and be happy to answer questions and take any other comments.
All right. Any comments from Commissioners? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is.
Sorry.
This is Rich.
Oh, hello, Rich.
Let you know, join.
All right. You're lagging really bad.
Okay, I'll say can do, I'll not use what before.
All right. Commissioner Wiggins?
Yeah, I have a question to the, when you did, you mentioned, okay, this is, I said a parking spot, compact spot, where a compact? Yeah, that's a, yeah, there's an, I'm trying to see if I could get to it.
Could you repeat his question? Could you repeat his question? I could not hear him. I don't know about the other folk, but I could not hear him.
The question was, what is the space dimensioning? Is it 10 feet by 20 feet? I've seen 9 by 18 as a standard. I'm just curious, because I didn't see it in this section.
It's a, it's in an engineering standard, and I'm looking now to see if I could find where that might, yeah, I don't think it's codified, so.
Should.
Right. There's, they have a, they have a standard detail sheet. I'll make sure to include that.
Should we reference a standard then?
Well, I'll make sure that that gets in, that should be incorporated into this. And there's a, there's a two-page sheet that has the width, required width of drive aisles and parking, and I think to directly answer your question, a parking space is like 18 and a half, 18 and a half feet by nine feet is the standard dimension for a, you know, just a rectangular perpendicular parking space. And then there's some percentage that can be compact, so it's some, there's some percentage of the total number of parking spaces that may be compact, which are, which are smaller, I think 8 by 16, off the top of my head. But they, yeah, they're definitely smaller spaces that don't fit pickup trucks.
Other comments?
I have a couple of clarification questions, if you will.
Go ahead.
I know there are a couple of locations here in Carson City that don't have set-aside parking lots, so one of them on Rice Street and one of them on Telegraph, that, the one on Rice doesn't share street parking with anybody necessarily, except maybe the tattoo parlor, but the one on Telegraph shares a lot of parking spaces. So I'm curious, are they grandfathered in these requirements or what?
Yeah, this, good afternoon, Hope, how you doing? I can't, I can't see you from there.
Morning.
I am, but I can just, just hear you. Well, I think there's actually two different cases there, because Rice Street, which is north of, north of the downtown mixed-use district, is probably retail commercial, you know, not knowing exactly which property you're talking about, but some commercial designation, which is a grandfathered situation where there are commercial uses and there's not a parking lot, where there's enough parking onsite that to meet the current standard, which that's, that sounds about right for some of those properties in that vicinity. They are grandfathered downtown as well. Like I said, I think on Telegraph Street in particular is kind of that vicinity where there's literally no onsite parking, all parking is on the street. And our downtown mixed-use code that has specific downtown parking standards allows uses to change within those buildings without additional parking being required unless they're actually expanding the square footage of the building. Does that answer your question?
Do that. I have a couple on this table, on page four, starting on page four. I think I know what the answer is, I just want to verify it. Under residential use, we have age-restricted senior housing developments. Is that a à la vintage type development, or is that a nursing home continual care? And I believe it's like a vintage, where it's an age-restricted housing area.
Well, and one we have would be like Autumn Village, that's senior housing on Beverly Way, that's age-restricted to seniors only, so it's that type of housing. I think it could apply to, to an age-restricted subdivision possibly. We have, it hasn't been applied to that, but it, but it could.
Well, and what drew me to this to begin with was there was no allocation for staff, so I had to sit down and think about what we were talking about. This is not, this is not a staffed.
Congregate care is the staffed one, which is a different use and has a different parking standard that includes parking for employees.
Okay.
You know, if I could, you have a couple other questions, but kind of now that, on the topic of the number of spaces required for different types of uses, I would note that if you go to, on page three, just before that table starts, the number of spaces required, we've had in, we've had in the parking standards for some time now, this wiggle room of saying if an accredited source such as a manual from the Transportation of Institution, Institute of Transportation Engineers provides an acceptable alternative to park, to a parking standard in this section, the director may approve the alternative standard. And in other words, there's a whole manual on parking, and we have standards in our code that are, it's if, if it's X, then Y parking's required, but in the manual, there are slight variations of different types of multifamily housing, for example, and different types of settings, and so they have tables and studies that sometimes provide a little bit different standard that usually are more favorable to them, obviously, when the developer's bringing it to us, it's always a reduced standard, but we've actually used this section pretty, quite a bit, relatively speaking. I mean, it's easy to come in and meet, and just say you're meeting the standard and park things, but this has actually been used quite a bit, and it's been effective for dealing with those uses where the standard that's in the code is really maybe a little excessive and a little more than is needed in reality, and, you know, to, to, I think, Commissioner Eswein's comments about parking this, and not, you know, sometimes we require too much parking, and that still may be the case, but, you know, there actually is in here this provision that allows us to do reduced parking based on actual studies, and so I think it's been used to pretty good effect over the last couple decades we've been using it.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff on parking? Let's landscape.
Landscaping, another section with a lot of technical corrections and just a, just a couple of cleanup items, again, from, just from practice, and has, as we've kind of tried to implement the code with some different things that come up, so it's really just a little bit of cleanup verbiage. So a couple areas I want to point out, first of all, with landscaping in, in Section 3.6 deals with turf, grass area. There was a misconception for a long time that, you know, as water becomes an issue that, well, the city requires people to have grass, requires commercial developments to have grass, and we, in fact, do not require any grass in any landscape plan, in any commercial landscape plan. In fact, our code for a long time has had maximums on the percentage of your landscaping that can be turf, and you can get a special use permit to get more, but there's actually maximums on turf. But that's not the change. So one of the, the proposed change in there, you know, as over, especially over the last few years, and certainly within the, you know, within the last 20 years or almost since this was adopted, the artificial turf products have become better and better in appearance. You know, I think 20 years ago, you think of the AstroTurf, the carpet, green carpeting, but the products today are a little bit better to have a better appearance and look like turf, so. Let me get to the, what page, what page is this on in here? Sorry, this is on page, starting on page six of the landscape, of the marked-up landscape So our proposal is there is to expressly allow artificial turf to be used as, in the limited proportion that's permitted for regular turf, and provided that it must be of a quality to resemble the natural turf and maintain in perpetuity.
Do we want to, instead of allow, do we want to encourage? You know, if, I don't know how you do that, but, you know, all things being equal, we are in an area, we are in an arid area, and if we encourage people to use the AstroTurf or a turf product as opposed to grass.
Well, I think in terms of encouraging versus, I don't know that we want everybody to encourage everybody to use that instead of other live plant materials. You can have low water use plants and meet our landscape requirements.
All right.
So I, I mean, I think, I think allowing it helps, helps the people, helps landscapers sometimes, or the businesses get the, get the look they want with some, with some of the turf in there. Okay, that's, that's one. Again, with this one, just a couple, there's just a couple more, so I'll go through them real quick. With trees, the, in 3.7, 1B, deals with property frontage trees and the number of trees required per, along the business frontage. I think the original intent was, it was written originally so that you would get a tree planted every 30 feet, but it's not what it says. It says you have to have one tree per 30 feet of lineal frontage, but when you take away driveways and other constraints, you end up with more, more trees than every 30 And so the, in practice, we've always had to work with, with the landscapers to really kind of address this issue and put trees properly spaced, because less than 30 feet is not proper spacing for decent-sized street trees, so we're proposing to change it from, to one tree per 50 feet of frontage. It was some verbiage in there about spreading them out and allowing for clustering based on the individual circumstances of the property. And then on 3.72, and variation of tree species, we're still meeting the intent there, but just the verbiage was reading wrong a little bit, saying that a minimum of 50% of the trees had to be of a different species, and that's just flipped the other way to say a maximum of 60% of the trees can be of the same species. And then ground cover and shrubs, the code was amended a few, number of years ago to require shrubs, because it was omitted originally, and it was, the standard was based on the number of trees, but then if somebody does grass, then they still have trees and still have a bunch of shrubs, so just to clarify that and clean that up a bit, it's, we're proposing to amend it to require the same number of shrubs based on the 400 square feet. 400 square feet equals one tree, so it all equals the same, but it's 400 square feet of required landscape area excluding turfed areas. So just really in practice how we've done it, but just a little cleanup in verbiage. Those are all the changes I have to note.
Okay. Any comments from the Commission?
I got a comment for this Commissioner Wiggins. On the landscaping, and good timing, we actually had a damage due to a tree and a tree stake going into one of our utilities, and I didn't see that really mentioned in any of the landscaping or irrigation plans, insofar that there could be a line item that said during design to avoid conflicts with utilities, and that could also apply to roads and sidewalks, but maybe there's other standards that say, you know, don't place a tree two feet off a sidewalk. I'm just not aware of those standards, but I would just suggest that to staff. They may ask their own departments, city departments, if they would have any language they would like to propose to avoid those conflicts. When the tree's tiny, it's not a big deal, but when it grows after 20 years, tends to push underground facilities the wrong direction. Thanks.
Yes, we'll do, and you know, I can't, I won't search it, I'll, thanks for the comment, and I'll look and through the landscape and irrigation plans. I recall there being something about having to show those types of, where existing easements and utilities are on the plan, and if I'm mistaken, I'll kind of look for that. And I remember in engineering, I thought there was something about water lines too, because I know in practice, there's been, there's something in there where there's water lines, we've actually, so I'm thinking it's in the code, and again, I'll check if it's not, but we didn't require the, the trees and the landscaping along the frontage, because there was, there happened to be a water line right under there, and we couldn't plant trees right on top of that, so, so we'll make sure there's consideration for utilities like that in there. Thank you.
Lee, on the, on page 42 and 43, under root pruning, it looks like this was lifted from somewhere else, which is fine, but it's all in centimeters and meters, and it's, we just need to change the measurements. And I guess the assumption is that everybody that reads the landscape appendix to Title 18 knows what a caliper is. I know there's no place for definitions, but if you don't know what a caliper is, when they're talking about trees, you may not really understand what, what they're talking about, but then the flip side of that is, people that are reading this are landscapers who know what a caliper of a tree is and how it's measured.
Right. I thought about that very thing as, as I was reading it, but you're right, this, in fact, landscape plans for, this is, landscaping is not required, this is not the single-family homeowner that's doing this. We don't have that requirement, and the landscape plans for the commercial industrial developments are required to be prepared by a design professional. So yeah, this is, there's some fairly esoteric verbiage in here that's, that's customary to the, to the industry. The attachments and the appendix are all from, they're from before, they're not touched, they're, but they, but there was, there was a lot, a lot of input from the industry, from the landscapers themselves, into, into these attachments, as to, if we can find an attachment that has the proper centimeters, for, inches, whatever it is, inches and feet instead of centimeters and meters, we'll do that.
Well, the inches and centimeters is, you know, 1.2 meters is four feet, or about.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, we can, that, that's easy to do, but I think it's the only place in the whole document where we've gone back to the metric system.
Was it just that one that you noted?
It's just in this one section.
Yeah.
And it looks like the whole thing was lifted from something.
It's certainly lifted from somewhere else, yeah.
And, and I'm not criticizing that, I think that's, that's fine. I just, I think we just need to make it English instead of metric.
What is, yeah.
Are there any other comments from Commissioners? Yes, that's Mr. Perry. Paul, if that's you, you're really broken up. You want to try dialing in? You want to try dialing in? Yeah, bandwidth is really bad today.
Commissioner Perry, could, would you call in on the, the phone number on the front of the agenda? It's the 408 number, 408-418-9388, and we'll put you through that way. We can't, we can't hear you, Commissioner Perry.
Excuse me, Lee.
Yeah.
It's Commissioner S. Wine, we cannot hear.
Oh.
Oh. All right.
Commissioner S. Wine, we can't hear you. We can't, we, we can hear, we can't hear you so bad that I didn't know it was Commissioner S. Wine.
Hello?
Commissioner S. Wine?
Yes, I'm on the phone now.
All right, now we can hear you.
Okay, my, my comment is, is since we just recently adopted stormwater standards, shouldn't, shouldn't we include something about low-income development? In these landscape design requirements?
They're thinking. Yeah, no, right, I'm thinking, not frozen, your screen's not frozen, I was thinking. Yeah, I don't know that the, it, what are, it, the, our current landscape standards address it in that water retention areas are permitted to be counted towards landscape areas. So I, I'm not sure how else you want it addressed. I don't, I don't think we want the LID standards in the landscape standards, because LID is being addressed as part of the drainage plan, but our, our landscape standards do acknowledge that the, the detention areas can be counted towards landscaping as long as they meet some minimum landscape sty, standards up to a certain percentage of the total landscaping.
Well, I've, I've read, I've read a couple sections on this and it seems to, I'm getting feedback on my earphone from the, so it's hard for me to, to, to speak at the same time. But anyway, anyway, there are some places in the code, in a proposed code, that says, that seem to be a li, little bit different than the LID requirements. Like in parking areas, for instance, you talk about, or it talks about having curbs and, and whatnot. And it should, and it shouldn't, shouldn't it at least reference the fact that you could use LID standards to direct water into landscape areas?
You're right. Yep. I know, I, I remember that, you're, what you're talking about, where it requires curbs to separate the landscaped areas, so it's, that would be like.
Right.
Except where low-impact development standards are being used. Do you know, do you have off, offhand what's, what section that's in? Do you remember? Do you have that in?
Uh, let me see if I can find it.
I'll fi, I'll find it. I'll ma, I'll make a note of it, that's okay.
It's Details 13, uh, 3, 3.11. And I would just, I would just suggest that at the very beginning of the section on landscaping, that we, that we reference the LID standards.
Okay, yeah, point, point taken. We'll, we'll review, because you're right, we'd have not, we've obviously done the LID standards, but I don't think we have, we went through them in the context of the landscape standards. So we'll go back to the LID standards, which are, which haven't been heard by the board yet. They were, they were delayed, so just as a little update on that. But yeah, I'll look at, I'll look at those and where there needs to be some incorporation back into this, we'll, we'll try to go, go back and work on that. And if you have any other suggestions specifically, you can get them to me sometime.
Okay. I'm gonna hang up now.
Are there any other comments from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. Lee, are we done?
Yep. Think that, I, I figured that would be fairly easy, that's a little, little quicker than I thought. I guess. Yep, I guess, thought we might have more discussion on parking a little bit, but I, you know, like I said, overall, these are, these are sections of the code that have generally been working, the kind of the, 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 you know, the, the little bit of changes that we're making are just based on experience, when we haven't got a lot of negative feedback from, from the developers or others on, on these standards. So I think it's just a lot of cleanup on these standards. I'll also take, just to, to finish up, while, while we're talking about, on the item and Title 18 discussion in general, I'm scheduled to meet with, and well, talk with the DA's office about how we're gonna translate all these comments and workshops we're getting into a document that we could start reviewing to get, actually get adopted and start getting some of these revised standards implemented. If you look at the total of Title 18, where we've only gone through maybe half of it, probably in the number of pages, not even half of it, because there's a lot of chapters that relate to engineering standards, park standards, trail standards, addressing, et cetera, that we're really not, well, there's a lot, there's a lot more too, we're gonna have to figure out how to incorporate. But I'm gonna work with, Upshot is, gonna talk to the DA's office about what our path forward is going to be. I don't have another workshop planned at this point. We'll schedule, we'll schedule something for the start of, for the start of 2021 to move on. And now, by then, I hope to have a better plan on how to start getting to the point where we can get changes in a format for your review for adoption. This is early December now, because, you know, early, we're, when, as we're kind of scheduling these based on room availability, early January is probably a holiday time to, to skip. So I know we might be, I'll look at calendars and we'll, we'll consider what we need to do after talking to the DA's office, but it might be at the end of January or early February before the next workshop.
Okay, and our regular December meeting is still on for, next Wednesday?
For the, what's the date? Just Tuesday, December 15th is the special scheduled, special December schedule, regular meeting. So that's next Tuesday, your packets will be coming out in the, in the next two days for that.
Okay. There any other comments from the commission? The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority, the planning commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any other public comment?
I see no final public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Second, Mr. Tinkell, all in favor, say aye. Thanks, everybody.